This whole tight for just a few minutes, hopefully you'll be here. Test, can you guys hear me in the back? Kind of good, okay. Doesn't sound like it's working, but. Good job. Here we go. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 5th, 2025 Bruce Township Planning Commission Meeting. Our start time is 6:03 PM. Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Hegelstein.
Here.
Voice.
Yes.
Vincent.
Uh, D.
Here.
Jay Vincent.
Here.
Blaylock.
Here.
Barnett.
Here.
Cant.
Here.
Everybody's here, we have a quorum. So before we start the meeting, as you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, but we do welcome public comments, various points throughout our agenda. We do ask that you sign in to the table to my right along the wall there, if you haven't already done so, just so we have a record of who is in attendance this evening. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township residents appointed by the board. In addition, we have township employee Dana Buchanan, who is the planning coordinator for the township. And we also have Joe Tangeri, who's a professional planner with Get Full Webster, who advises us on the work that we do. There will be a public comment this evening and two public hearings. So there will be opportunities at two different places throughout the agenda if you like to provide input. Generally, we ask that you keep those comments to three minutes. If you're representing a larger group of neighbors, we will increase that, but just generally, we will keep track of time. If you do come up to speak, we do ask you to state your name and address and just please address the commissioners and not anybody in the audience. And with that, we appreciate your participation in this meeting this evening. Okay, so item on the agenda is approval of the January 8th Planning Commission meeting minutes. I believe there was one correction, is that right Dana, is that what this?
That, that's the one that, that Anne Marie caught, in addition to any of it.
Okay. So Commissioners, there's a handout at your seat that had one change for the Nick. I'm not gonna try to pronounce his last name, but when Nick came up and spoke, there was one change there. Is there any other changes from any Commissioners on the January minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve? As amended.
Second.
Motion by Cant, seconded by Hegelstein, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item five is approval of the agenda for this evening. Are there any changes any Commissioners have to recommend? Hopefully doesn't involve adding anything because it's already big. Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jay Vincent, seconded by Cant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, item six is our public comment. So if you are here and would like to come up and speak to the Commissioners on any general topic, now is a great time to do that. If you are here for the special land use requests or rezoning requests, those will be, they'll have an opportunity to speak after this. So you can hold your comments there if you'd like, but if you would like to come speak on anything in general, please make your way up to the podium and state your name and address and feel free to address the Commissioners. And seeing no one moving, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our public hearings for this evening. We have two of them, first up is Lombardo rezoning requests on Van Dyke.
Cosmo Lombardo with Lombardo Homes, 13001 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. We were in front of this Planning Commission last month, January 8th. At that time, we had a proposal very similar to this one that was sent up to the Board of Trustees with a recommendation for approval. We were at the January 15th Board of Trustees meeting, there remained some concerns with some of the board members. So a motion to approve that request failed. In the, and after that meeting, we worked with some more township officials and that and talked to them about being able to address their concerns. This is the plan we came up with that we believe addresses everybody's concerns at this time. It comes with all the same general public benefits as the previous plan did. It doesn't have access to Melon, it helps resolve all those landlocked and split zoning parcels. It comes with the architectural restrictions, the same requirement for the Emmett's Energy Building. So really, this is a larger lot, two less homesite proposal that in every other measurable way is really the same. So we're just asking that you send this back up to the board where we think we can get this plan through the board.
Thanks, Cosmo. Any questions for Cosmo before we have Joe? Joe has an updated review since the rezoning request has changed. Any questions for Cosmo before we go?
Cosmo, I'm looking at the, the letter that you submitted on January 21st. And it has the, the conditions that you're offering. And I didn't see on here, but I think you just said it about either the refurbishing or demolition of the Emmett's Energy Building.
Yeah, is it not? If it's not on there, that's a mistake. If it's not, I, I did send one to Dana at one time and then realized I forgot it and then sent a new one. If it's not on there, that's a mistake on my end, I forgot to put it on there.
It is still what you're offering.
Yes.
Thank you. Was there a timeframe on that?
I think with, I think it was within 24 months, within 24 months of when this, so it'd be, you know, assuming it gets through, it'd be by February of 2027.
Joe, you wanna? Give us a quick run through on your review?
Yes. Right, so I know that we've, we've looked at this set of properties a few times, but not everyone here or watching at home has necessarily looked at them a few times. So I'll give a little summary just for the benefit of anybody who doesn't have the backstory. So this, this set of parcels here between Melon and Van Dyke, they're mostly vacant. The Emmett's Energy Building is the one bit of development on them. Has been before us a couple of times with a couple of different proposals for rezoning. And the rezoning proposals have been scaled back each time. And this time, we're looking at essentially a rezoning from C2 and R1B with a little bit of C1 to C2 and R1B. Just with different boundaries between the C2 and R1B districts. And then the C1 zoning is going to go away and be replaced with R1B zoning. And so that's where we've, we've found ourselves. Now, this is in a generally residential area, there's commercial development to the north, otherwise it's a residential area. And the total site that we're looking at is 23.19 acres, 11.9 acres of that is zoned C1 or C2 right now. All of the Van Dyke frontage has that commercial zoning. The C1 is at the southern end, the rest is C2. So with the newer proposal, what they're, what they would wind up with, with this proposed rezoning is 5.486 acres of C2 zoning that fronts on Van Dyke. And the remaining 16.103 acres would be R1B and that would facilitate a residential development, condominium subdivision. Most of the land to be R1Bs already zoned R1B. The proposal would apply that designation to all the current C1 zoning and a portion of the C2. The R1B district requires a minimum 20,000 square foot lot size. Now, the maximum number of units that could fit on 16.1 acres with R1B zoning, assuming that it was like a straight line with the perfect depth, would be, would be 34. But of course, it's not a straight line with the perfect depth, so you lose units when you put in streets and things. So they've got a concept plan with 27 units on it. Some of which are on the land that's currently zoned C1 and C2. Two of those are outlots and the rest of them would be in a condominium. The outlots are the C1 parcel at the end of Kading, which is currently zoned C1. When we look at the master plan, it has a split designation on the 2016 future land use map. Portions of zone C1 and C2 are designated commercial and the portions zoned R1B is designated low to moderate density, single family residential, which is consistent with R1B. They did provide a development impact statement as required. That impact statement was prepared before they went down from R1C to R1B. So of course, R1B with fewer homes is going to produce less traffic than R1C, so we didn't make them redo the study. Again, they've got that conceptual site plan. There are conditions attached to the rezoning, those have been offered by the applicant. The removal remodeling of the Emmett's Energy Building has been added verbally at this meeting. It was in a past printed version of the conditions. The other conditions are the actual rezoning from C1, C2, R1B to C2 and R1B. No vehicular access to Melon Street, landscape burn between the commercial and residential zoning. Minimum 22 by 22 side entry garages, brick up to the first floor and all four sides of each home. 2,200 square foot minimum ranches, 2,750 square foot minimum colonials. And then the property would use a 30-foot private right of way for the internal road in lieu of a 60-foot public right of way. The McComb Department of Roads is not generally accepting new public rights of way in subdivisions right now anyway. So they're probably going to have to be a private road. And then they, they've got some other details about the road within pavement cross section there as their other condition. I won't go through all the issues that we consider for zoning map amendment because again, we have discussed this a few times. But if you have any specific questions about any of those items in my letter, I'm happy to address them.
Joe, point of clarification. The latest drawing from Cosmo is she's showing a total of 28 units.
That's correct.
Versus 27 that you referenced. Right here. 26 plus two, 28.
28.
Okay.
Joe? When I figured it out, I came up with a rezone, the proposal will rezone, I think, 6.414 acres of existing commercial to residential.
Yes, that's, that is roughly, I'd have to do the subtraction, but yeah, that's, that's about right.
Okay, and when I compared that to what we currently show as vacant commercial, as you've been working on the master plan. working on the master plan, I'm coming up with that's about 16%.
Yeah, roughly.
Which is pretty small compared to where we started on this.
Sure.
The, I have a question about where Rick was going on the, or on these two outlots, as you're calling them. Are they going to be a separate development, or are they going to be part of the, a larger, like subdivision?
So when you have an outlot from a condo, it's generally not subject to the same master deed and bylaws as the rest of the lots that are part of the condominium. There are a number of reasons why a lot might be taken out of the condo. I don't know how many of you were on the board when we did insignia, point? It was, it was either Heights or Point. It's one of the insignias. There were some outlots within the subdivision, and that had something to do with like the need for engineered septic fields. In this case, those two lots wouldn't front on the internal road of the condo. So generally speaking, when you pay into your condominium association, you're paying to keep up the general common elements of the condominium association. And if those two lots aren't using the road that goes through, they probably shouldn't be paying into the fund to, to keep it maintained. So that's probably why those are listed as outlots.
Okay. I don't know if this is a you question or a Cosmo question, but are those homes going to face Van Dyke?
Yeah, so just to, yeah. One of them would have to, I think.
That's the first question. Yes, I would. The reason is, because I can apply for these under land division after getting them in the next 60, 90 days.
Correct.
Exactly, yeah.
And yeah, they don't want to be part of the condo, because you wouldn't want to pay for the road if you didn't use it.
Right.
This one I front on Kading. This one is Kading.
Okay.
And this one I front on Van Dyke.
Okay. Okay, and then, is it correct then, that, again, I don't know which one of you guys, that all of the conditions that you've offered would apply in the same manner to those two properties?
That is correct. Yep. Yeah, they wouldn't have a master deed, but the condition applies to all the property here. So yeah, the same conditions apply to those outlots, even though they're outlots.
Okay, thank you. And then, Joe, do you know if the fire chief has reviewed this little site plan document as to the adequacy of access for the fire department?
I'm going to have to defer to...
Yes, he has.
He has?
Yes.
And what was his answer?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. This, this satisfied him. Should have had something in writing, but he has. I can provide that.
Yeah, one of the people that I worked with in coming up with this plan was the fire marshal.
Oh, okay.
I have a question for you, Joe. Being that this is a private road, is there any issue? In 161, under private roads, it says that private roads shall not be located in any area served by public sewer and or water, or to be served in the foreseeable future?
Um, I, I don't think so. It's not going to be, I mean, I guess it is going to be extended here at some point in the future. I guess the issue with that is the county's not accepting public roads right now.
And I don't think, the road is smaller, because you wouldn't be able to make R1B work if the road had to be 60 feet.
Yeah, the road itself, and so part of my conditions is, the actual physical road that gets built has to be the same as a Macomb County road, so that it has the same structural integrity and traffic circulation and fire and all that. The right-of-way itself is smaller, and I did have to do that. We've had a lot of discussion about, I was really having a hard time making this work with R1B. That gave me the extra 60 feet that I needed to get reasonable building envelopes on these homesites. And I'd say, you know, because there's conditions, this is contract zoning, I think you can grant exceptions under contract zoning.
Joe, do you concur with that?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I would take it, the township attorney's opinion on that, but...
So it could be a condition of approval, if we were to make a motion, it could be conditional upon satisfactory approval from the township attorney?
Yeah, and ultimately, I mean, you get to that point when you're looking at the site plan for the, for the condo, because then you're reviewing the private road and you're reviewing the actual layout. I mean, strictly speaking, you could just put one big house there and move on with his life. So ultimately, that does get reviewed kind of at a later date, but it's a good point to bring up now, just so that we're all thinking about it. Yeah, well, it, you know, occurs to me that given the county's current stance on private roads, we may not have a workable standard there, so it might be something we want to look at.
All right, any other questions from commissioners? If not, anybody feeling a motion?
Do we need to take into...
Oh, yeah, we did. Sorry, thank you. Thank you for that. Take a motion to open the public hearing at 6:24 PM?
Second.
Second. Motion by Jay Vincent, second by Barnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, the public hearing for the Lombardo rezoning request on Van Dyke is now open. If you'd like to speak on behalf of this project, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and share your comments.
My name is Derek Lees, 70900 Carnegie Lane. This is the first I'm, I'm hearing about this project. I know it's been around for a while, but this is the opposite of what this township needs, is a dense, this is, this is a half-acre density. This is, this is not what Bruce Township is all about. I don't even know why this is in discussion, and I hear it's been in discussion for a while, so just want to voice my strong opposition to this, to this entire development. Thank you.
Anybody else here speak on this? Seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:26 PM?
Second.
Motion by Jay Vincent, second by Voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Back to the commission.
Going to make me do it again?
I'm, I'm ready to do it this time.
Okay, good.
Okay.
It was a lot of, lot of words.
Yeah. All right, I'll try to get tongue-tied. Okay, I'd like to submit a motion to the, to the board recommending approval for a conditional rezoning agreement of parcels 0135101-11-23-25-28-29-35 and -51. Yes, submitted by Lombardo Homes. The area of the site is 23.19 acres total, of which 5.486 acres will remain commercial, and 16.103 acres will be designated R1B residential. The maximum number of residential units will not exceed 28. In addition, the developer is offering the following stipulations to be included within the conditional rezoning agreement. No vehicular access to Melon Street. A landscape burn between commercial and residential zonings. A minimum 22 by 22 side entrance garages, that's 22 by 22 foot. The brick up to first floor on all four sides of each home. 2,200 square foot minimum for ranches. 2,700 square foot, a minimum square footage for colonials. Within 24 months from potential final approval by the Bruce Township Board of Trustees, it is stipulated that the existing structures, structure or structures at parcel 140135101028 will either be demolished or fully refurbished. The property shall be allowed to use a 30-foot private right-of-way for the internal roads in lieu of a 60-foot public right-of-way. The road width and pavement cross-sections shall be consistent with the road width and cross-section of a 28-foot wide curb-to-curb residential street required by the Macomb County Department of Roads. The reasons for recommending approval are, there is no increase to more dense zoning as the residential part of the plan is consistent with the existing R1B zoning and master plan. The R1B development is consistent with surrounding residential uses and zoning. The C2 development is consistent with commercial development directly to the north along Van Dyke. The rezoning of the commercial acreage corrects the irregular property lines to the east of Van Dyke and eliminates the otherwise remaining C1 spot zone property at the northwest corner of Kading and Van Dyke. The most viable portion of commercial property that would be realistically developed along Van Dyke remains intact. The rezoning is unlikely to unduly burden utilities and roadways in the area at the present time. The traffic study reflects reduced volumes when compared to the total commercial acreage that currently exists. And as already stated, the developer has provided multiple conditions that will benefit the township and surrounding residents. I will send this to you.
Did you get all that?
Anybody have any input for improvement?
It says 2,750 square feet, and I think you said 2,700. I just, you probably have...
2,750? Okay, thank you for the correction, Mandy. It was 2,200 for ranch, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you say the thing about the landlocked parcel?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I addressed it, I worded it...
Yeah, as long as we have it as a factor.
Yeah, eliminates the otherwise remaining C1 spot zone property at northwest corner of Kading and Van Dyke.
No, I'm talking about the landlocked...
There's three landlocked in there.
Within the interior, there's some landlocked parcels.
Let me see here.
Or we can just add that.
Well, it, rezoning of the commercial acreage corrects the irregular property lines to the east of Van Dyke, eliminates the otherwise, well, you know, then it goes on with the C1. So you want to take and revise that?
I would suggest, just saying specifically, that this plan eliminates that landlocked parcel in the middle of that...
Of, of C2 that would remain otherwise, correct?
All these are R1B properties. This one, this one, and this tiny sliver that's 14 feet wide.
There's just a bunch of stuff that has no...
Landlocked pieces of property.
Okay, so give me some words, David.
Eliminates free landlocked pieces of property, or consolidates three landlocked pieces of property.
Then my other suggestion maybe is, do we need to add something about what Mandy brought up, about the private road? That would be...
I think that needs to be reviewed at the time that they apply for...
Okay, so we don't need to make...
Yeah, site condominium approval.
I'll second the motion.
Easy part.
So, motion by Hegelstein, second by Ken. Any other discussion before we do the roll call? Dana, call the roll, please.
Kent?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Laylock?
Yes.
Jay Vincent?
Yes.
Haglestein?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up for public hearings this evening is the Delaying Accessory Building SLU request.
Good evening, I'm Dave Delayng, 78505 Pearl Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead and...
Yeah, go ahead and give us an overview.
The what and why.
Yep.
I'm requesting a special land use approval to add a 14 by 4, or by 24, which is 336 square feet shed on my property at the address I just gave. Rural suburban zoning. The proposed shed location is next to and set back behind the existing attached garage. The house and front door are oriented at 45 degrees angled to the street. If you've looked through the package, you see it sits funny, therefore it puts that in front of my house. The shed will also be closer to the road than my house. The shed's 90 feet, and my, to the corner, my house is 123 feet from the street. My hardship difficulty request is a result of terrain challenges, limiting location options for the shed. You got the package there on page attachments six and seven. The lot has a 55-foot elevation range across the five acres. Most of the property is heavily wooded. The proposed location is also the only feasible location with driveway access, so I can get a trailer and tractor with plow and whatnot to my driveway. The only other option would have been behind the garage, which it doesn't fit without violating the 10-foot from the property line. The shed will sit approximately 13 feet below the street level. And there's an eight-foot hill at the street, so in theory, you can't really see it, because it's 11 feet high. There is one area between, by the lot line, where there's a valley, you can see it through there, but in general, from the front of my, front, in the street in front of my house, you can't see it. It will be the only detached accessory building on my five-acre lot. And there should be two letters from neighbors in the package. One is from my neighbor to the south, who has a direct side line of sight to the area, and they both were fine with me putting it there. That's an only option. And that's, that's my spiel for now.
All right.
I didn't want to go through the whole package, obviously.
No, I would say thank you for the very thorough package. Provides a lot of information. We appreciate you putting the detail in to help us understand the situation. Any questions for the applicant before we have Joe give us a run-through on his review?
I have one. You have noted this is not a permanent structure. I'm curious why you've chosen that option?
Economics.
I'm sorry?
Economic, money.
Okay.
It's a pre-built, they put it in, they come and they grade the land, put in four inches of gravel, and then it's a pre-built shed. They come and set it on that pre-built pad.
Okay, so you really don't have the intention of moving it off the gravel area? It's just...
No, no.
Is it prefab?
Right.
Okay, thank you for the...
And also, the electrical comes through that area, so rat walls and things like that, it would have been a major tear, so this seemed like the best option.
Hey, thank you for the clarification.
All right, hold tight. We're going to have Joe give us his, his review of it, and we'll be back.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes, so the reason we are looking at this is that it is located in a front yard. It's not in the required front yard, though, it's, it's set back far enough. As he said, it's a little over five-acre lot, 336 square foot building. The lot is pretty topographically varied. You do have two sheets in your packet that show the contour lines of the property. And it is kind of behind a hill, as he said, as far as the roadway is concerned. It's, there's photos in there that also show the little hill, and it's behind that hill in the, in the photos. The RS zoning, a detached accessory structure has to be located a minimum of 12 feet from the principal structure and 10 feet from a side lot line. And it's also not permitted to be in the... And it's also not permitted to be in the required front yard. So the front setback is 90 feet, which exceeds the 75-foot required setback. It's 35 feet from the principal building and the distance from the nearest side lot line is 10 feet at one corner and 13 feet at the other. Maximum height for an accessory building under 850 square feet is 22 feet. This is 11 feet tall. And we have four standards for special land use approval for detached, or for, sorry, detached accessory buildings. One, there's proportionality between the size of the lot, street frontage, and the size of the accessory structure. The accessory structure is in harmony with the principal structure, the environment, the topography, and the surrounding properties. Interiors and colors of the proposed accessory building match or complement the principal building, and an accessory building permitted in a side yard does not exceed the ground floor. Square footage of the principal building, this is 336 square feet, so it obviously meets that last one. They have provided some elevations of the proposed steel-sided building along with topographical information, photos of the site. They've shown us a photo of where the building is to be placed. The proposed shed is going to be placed at a lower elevation than the street, 960 feet versus about 990. And the lot outside the yards near the house is pretty much entirely wooded, except for the area of lawn to the north of the house, and that is where the septic field is located. Again, this requires special land use approval. That is a recommendation from the planning commission to the township board.
All right, thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? All right, make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:40 PM.
Second.
Motion by Jay Vincent, second by Hegelstein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, public hearing is now open. If you are here to speak on the special land use for 78505 Pearl Drive, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know your comments. Seeing nobody making their way, I would motion to close the public hearing at 6:40 PM.
Second.
Motion by Jay Vincent, second by Barnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, back to the commissioners. We've got all the information. I've heard from Joe. Any further discussion, or does anybody feel a motion?
Do we know what the materials are for this? It's metal, I'm guessing?
It's construction. It's, code is 2x4, 6 is in. Heating on the sides.
And the colors are going to complement your house?
Okay. I drove by. You're really strained with flat land there. I make a motion to recommend to the board to approve a special land use for 78505 Pearl Drive, parcel 140107100014, to approve a 14-by-24, 336-square-foot non-permanent structure be allowed in the non-required front yard due to the hardship of the topography of the land. Second. Can I interject one thing? Just a minor thing, sorry, David.
Now that you have a second, yes, you can.
What's that?
Yeah, we have to get the second. You have the second before you interject. So you've got your second.
Okay, all right. So we got the second.
Yep, go ahead.
You can make an amendment. Yeah, you just, I mean, I'm asking if we want to consider, you know, we got the topography, but also I believe it's low visibility from the, from the street, correct?
That's what I was going to add, too.
That's my only comment.
But I think in that, I think it's also unusual, the position of the house relative to the road. I mean, I think if, it's technically behind the house, it just happens to be closer to the road because of how the property is structured and how the house is relative to that. I don't know if we want to add that as another reason or not, it's just because it isn't that being the front yard, but.
I think the more reasons we can add, the better.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Okay.
Orientation of the house.
So we're going to amend Randy's motion to include the low visibility and the unique placement of the home relative to the street orientation. All right, so we have a motion by Kent, second by Hegelstein, second by D. Vincent. Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Leilac?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
D. Vincent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Jay Vincent?
Yes. Motion carries. So this will be going to the board in two weeks for a final up or down vote. All right, that wraps up item seven on the agenda. Item eight is reviews. First up is the Raz Site Plan Phase One for 13743 33 Mile Road.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Justin Raz, Raz Building and Development. As you stated, 13743 33 Mile Road. Tonight, I'm coming before you. You've got your packets. We've presented you with a plan to renovate and add on to our existing building. Locations 33 Mile Road and McKay. We understand that we would need to come in for a more comprehensive review on site plan and get site plan approval along with engineering approval. But in the interim, while we're waiting for the homestead development, which is north of our property line, and will eventually have an access road to 33 Mile Road right through our driveways, we would like to do minimal addition renovation to the building. The building needs a facelift. We'd be adding some square footage to the north side of the building as the plans indicate. And this vertical construction, we feel, is, you know, able to be done at an opportune time in kind of a phase-one fashion. And that's what we're presenting to you this evening. The idea is, is that we could go ahead and get these renovations done, give the building the facelift, gain the space that we need to bring some things inside that are currently stored outside. We're really not, I'll say it this way, we are increasing the footprint of the building itself, but not the footprint of hard surface that's currently there. The area that we're going to enclose is partial lean-to, and it is a concrete pad right now. The other renovations that we'd be doing to the building are mainly interior space that's being reallocated from storage use to office use, bathrooms, mechanical, et cetera. We don't have any exterior, you know, roof-mounted mechanicals or anything like that. We do have an air conditioner outside. All of the office space is heated with a typical furnace. The shop space is heated in a couple different manners. We have a tube heater and we've got a blower heater. So we really don't, you know, have any rooftop units, you know, that you may typically see in a L1, you know, zoning. Phase two of the project would be us coming in when appropriate to get that full-blown site plan approval and then move on to engineering approval in order to create and develop infrastructure around the building that's necessary to comply with the ordinance for parking, storm, and so on. We are unable to do that right now based on the fact that the access road that we will use to access the north side of our building hasn't been constructed yet. Also, the sanitary line and storm line is part of that larger homestead development that we would be tapping into. Without those structures actually in place, it's very difficult to get proper elevation set up to tie our storm system into that. So, you know, mainly what I'm here tonight is to present the idea of a renovation and addition, and then a future phase-two project coming down the line. I can't give you a timeline on that, but we're expecting some movement on the Homestead Drive soon. If you have any questions about the packet that I've, you know, dropped off, I'd be happy to answer them. I think Joe's done a very comprehensive review. We are in for a building permit, and that actually triggered this meeting this evening. And that's why we're here in front of you.
Any questions for Justin before we turn it over to Joe? All right. Joe?
All right, so he's described the project. I'll give you a couple details here. Existing building is 5,257 square feet, and the addition would be 1,443 square feet. So the, the building's broken into two suites, A and B. This would be added on to B, which is their, the one that they're occupying. And they would both have a little over 3,000 square feet after the addition. It's a 1.15-acre site. This was an agricultural building at one point. They've reoccupied it as their offices. Surrounding zoning is mostly industrial, but there is C2 to the west. That's an approved shopping center, which of course has not been built yet. And then beyond the industrial parcel to the north of them, there's the homestead under construction, and that's the road that he's referring to, the access road that takes you from 33 Mile into the homestead is ultimately going to be used to access the commercial development to the west, this site, the site to the north, and possibly even the site to the east. So just looking at the dimensional standards of the LI1 district, it meets all the setbacks. I didn't see the building height on there. I know it's less than 30 feet, but just want to confirm that number.
It actually must be 40 because LI is 40, right?
Yeah, it's 20-something feet, I know that much, but. The, because we're just talking about the building here, I did put in the bit about the appearance standards. I noted that the plans actually show, right now it is a non-masonry facade on the front. It was wainscoting. I noticed that the plans show, like veneers and things on them. Are you doing that at this point, or was that? Okay.
Yeah, so again, we want to try to do as much of the renovation and construction as possible prior to site work, you know, to get that done and out of the way. The two renderings on the plans, the architectural plans that you have, show a couple different, they're showing a split-faced block, wainscoting of about four feet high capped off with limestone, and then a brick veneer, which would be a face brick type of product. You know, mind you guys, this is a pole barn. We don't have a proper footing to masonry facade, so we're going to use products that we can adhere to them. You know, we are still showing some metal siding on some of the elevations of the plan. We're going to have a happy median with accents to this building, but the colors are going to change with the addition. We have to essentially take the roof off the entire east side. We're going to re-roof that with metal product again, and then, you know, change the colors.
Right. The appearance standard applies to the front facade of the building, so the elevations that they're showing would make this building compliant. At present, it is not conforming with the appearance standards of the ordinance for non-residential buildings. Also noted that rooftop screening isn't proposed, or rooftop equipment isn't proposed. So as noted, at this time, they're not proposing to make other alterations to the site. So they're essentially asking for approval to expand the building as a phase-one with a larger phase-two addressing the full site. After the construction of the homestead, access road is complete and as-built drawings are available. And they did provide a preliminary drawing of a conceptual layout of that second phase of construction that obviously would be refined if they went to a full-site plan.
Was that the last drawing in there?
Yeah, that's what the last drawing is. They show like an additional suite and parking and access off of the, because right now there's like a dirt driveway access off of 33 Mile. And they would be giving a paved access off of that access road. Looked at the parking requirements, of course, parking is undefined on the site right now, but I did put that in the letter. Here's what they need for the space they have, which is 14 spaces. And then same with loading and things like that. Their, their conceptual plan shows that basically the whole back of the building would be loading. And right now, it's a sort of an undefined area where they can pull up to the building and use the roll-up doors that are back there. And of course, trees. Let's see, there wouldn't be a greenbelt requirement because there's no residential uses that are adjacent to this, but clear vision zone, a dumpster enclosure, that's all going to be required when they do the full site. And then exterior lighting isn't proposed right now, but when they do come in at the end, they're going to need to have the lighting plan and all that stuff as well. So do you have any?
You said that would all be part of phase-two.
Yeah, that's all part of phase-two when they do the full site. Do you have any questions for me? Any points of discussion?
All right, thank you, Joe. Back to the commissioners, any questions? Joe, because this is a site plan, I refresh my memory that this is a direct approval, not a recommendation of the board.
Yes. Why is it you?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, go for it.
When would you be proposing to start this?
Like I said in my opening remarks, the application for a building permit triggered this meeting.
So you already had that in?
Yeah, and again, we, you know, we've gone in for the permit and, you know, again, in our opinion, this is just simple addition, vertical construction, renovation. We're not trying to, you know, skirt the issue, it's just a, you know, we're trying to come in and it just lets you guys know what we're doing so that we can get our building permit. We'd like to get going since. We did a few preparatory things since the homestead came in for site approval. You know, we had an overhead line for DTE feeding power to our building. We've paid to take that out. Our well actually was on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of our driveway. We're on low water still from when we originally purchased this piece of land. We've terminated that well, we've tapped into this water, you know, sent our power underground from across 33 Mile Road south to our building. So we've done a few preparatory things. The area that we can park right now is on the west side of the building, but that's where this new access road is going to go. You know, we've removed the overhead door that was there and closed in that side of the building in preparation for Homestead Drive. the building in preparation for Homestead Drive. So, yeah, as soon as we can get moving on something, we plan.
So, Joe, just so I'm clear, we would be approving a site plan that wouldn't necessarily meet all of the requirements, but we could make that conditional?
You're conditioned on them meeting the requirements when they come in for a phase
All right, I would make a motion to approve Phase One, or Site Plan Phase One at 13-743 33 Mile Road for a addition on the existing structure located on the parcel. Acknowledging that applicant is not proposing to comply with all site plan requirements due to the access road not yet constructed, in addition, due to the utilities that will eventually be installed not yet installed, which is creating some uncertainty around final elevation and location. And this would be, applicant would be required to meet site plan requirements upon phase two submission. This is motion.
Second that.
Motion by Vincent, second by Kent. Any discussion from commissioners?
If I could just add one clarification, not only did he want to expand, but he wanted to modify the existing structure that's there. I don't know if that needs to be included.
Or the exterior.
Exterior, yeah.
So, it's a expand and enhance exterior?
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, so motion as amended. No other discussion? Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Boyce?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Jay Vincent?
Yes.
Hankelstein?
Yes.
Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It was bound to him.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. All right. Item 8B is the Hills of 34 Mile Final Site Condominium Review.
This is, we're going to call this part one, because there's a part two coming right after it.
Yeah, so we'll do the hills, and then right over that is Christina's Crossing. We'll do them back-to-back, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I looked at my letters like 40 times to make sure that I had the right name for the condo, or the right location. So, yes, starting with the hills of 43 Mile.
34.
Oh, 34 Mile, 43 Mile, Jesus. Significantly further north. So, we looked at the preliminary condominium plan for this back in, I believe it was November, maybe December, November or December, one or the other. Oh, it was October, okay. All right, it feels really recent.
I wasn't here for it, that's why.
Okay. But at any rate, so this is going to apply to both of, both this item and the next item, so I'm going to make some general comments about what we're looking at, and then I'll get into some specifics about this one. We don't often see site condominiums of just two lots. It's essentially a lot split, just done with the device of a site condominium, which is under state law is a principally permitted use in any residentially zoned district. And because they're essentially lot splits, you're going to create two lots in each case, they're subject to your typical agricultural runoff requirements. We're not building any common elements here. There's no roads, no detention ponds or things like that. So, a lot of what we would normally be dealing with in a condominium subdivision is not really present here, which is part of the reason that we're looking at the final condominium so soon after we looked at preliminary, because usually there's a long period where you're going through engineering review and working out all the details of your utilities and roadway and everything, and this is not present here. So, getting into the Hills of 34 Mile, which is on 34 Mile Road, south of the proving grounds, zoned R1. It is a two-lot residential condo on 20.06 acres, and both of the condo lots are going to be just slightly above 10 acres. Both of them front on 34 Mile. Site's currently vacant, portion's been previously cultivated. Site's zoned R1, all surrounding properties are zoned R1 except for the proving grounds, which is RS. The R1 district requires a minimum lot size of 90,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 150 feet. Both lots shown on the plan meet those standards. There's no streets that are proposed, drainage requirements follow typical resident, typical requirements for a single-family lot. When we look at condo design, again, a lot of the things that we would normally be looking at for condo design don't really apply here, but it does have frontage on a major thoroughfare, both of the lots do, in fact. We discussed pedestrian walks at the last meeting. They pay into the fund if they're not building them. Of course, out here, there's like no sidewalk within like more than a mile, so it wouldn't really make a lot of sense to put one along the front of these, so they'll be paying into the fund. Street trees are required. You are supposed to have one per lot. The entire front of each lot is heavily forested on this one, so there's not really going to be a need for those street trees here, because there's already a ton of them. And then as far as the information that's needed, during the preliminary phase, they provided items A through D, so those are still present. I did not have a copy of the master deed at the time of writing this letter, so my letter says not provided. However, one has been provided, and it has been reviewed by the attorney at this point. She did have a couple of notes where she wanted a comment from the engineer on one thing and a comment from me on another thing, and that could be provided. The items F through G, FG and H, don't really apply here because there's no street construction, there's no detention basin, and there's no sewer or water lines, so there's nothing to show as far as those are concerned. Again, it's essentially a lot split, it's just that the mechanism being used for the lot split is a condominium subdivision rather than a traditional land division. Any questions?
Question, Joe. If this were to be, if we were to recommend approval, would the motion be similar to that for the preliminary site plan reviews back in October?
Would be similar, yeah.
I think we would also have to add the three issues, or three items raised by our attorney.
Yes, satisfactory resolution of the questions raised by the attorney, I think would be a reasonable condition.
Right, but there's, as I'm reading it and going back as to notes in the minutes from October, there's really nothing different outside of, he's got the legal document now that enables him to file it, move forward.
Exactly, yeah.
Joe, on seven, the street trees. I think we talked about this at the preliminary with the applicant, but I think, do we just need to confirm that, because I don't know if some of those trees might be taken down as a part of development, but we just said you need to confirm that no less than the minimum is maintained.
Exactly, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I think we said before that the final plan will have to comply with regulation for street trees.
That's correct.
So, that would, obviously, if the trees are already there, then...
Right, exactly.
Any other questions for Joe? And if not, hearing none, anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
This would be a motion on the Hills.
Yes, first up is the Hills.
No, not on these.
Well, I made the motion on the Hills back in October, so I'll take a stab at it again. All right, I'm going to read from our minutes. I made a motion to approve the final condominium plan review for the Hills of 34 Mile Road, which is parcel number 14-01-100-031. And that the approval is contingent upon the developer paying into the township fund in lieu of construction of pedestrian walkways, and that the final plan is compliant with regulation for street trees, that the future driveways and buildings will comply with applicable township ordinances and buildings to be located within the building envelope. And as to the proposed master deed, that the following also be added as contingencies, that the master deed in Form B of the condominium subdivision plan be reviewed by the township planner with respect to any planning concerns and specific planning items that may need to be addressed and included in the master plan. Secondly, that the legal description and Form B of the condominium subdivision plan be reviewed by the township engineer for accuracy. And number three, that Section 8 easements, Paragraph 8.3 governmental units be revised to provide the township right to access the property if necessary for utility purposes.
Henry, in the parcel ID, you missed 29.
Oh, I said the wrong...
14012910031.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Boyce. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Barnett. Any other discussion?
What is the frontage per lot?
It's going to be close, I'd look, it was like 590 something or something, the whole width on 34, it was pretty wide.
Being that the front is heavily wooded, and it says a tree not less than every 50 feet, I would say we just change it to six trees per lot. If he thins them out, there might be a gap where there's dead trees. It could be, so rather than having to plant a new tree just to happen to make for the 50 feet.
Well, I think what you're proposing would be in accordance with our existing regulation.
Yeah, I think we're just basically saying he's got to meet the requirement, and then if he's meeting the requirement with something that's already there, that's fine, and if he's meeting the requirement by planting something new, that's also fine. So, I think it's covered in the motion as stated.
You good?
I just would hate to see him have to plant a tree because it's 60 feet between
All right, Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Leila?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Hankelstein?
Yes.
Jay Vincent?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, for the record, we have typically allowed trees to be grouped a little bit, as long as there's enough of them to make the math work, so...
Okay. Thank you, Joe, for that clarification. All right, so then, next up is similar but different, Christina's Crossings, Final Site Condo Approval.
Right, so just about all of what I said the first time, carry that over to this one. Difference here is that the total area that we're dealing with is 10.8 acres. These lots are going to be 5.811 acres and 3.064 acres respectively. Both of them are going to front on Taft Road. The larger lot does also have a small amount of frontage on Fisher Road. There's kind of like a chimney that sticks off to the side. Also currently vacant, also partially previously cultivated. Also R1, all surrounded by R1. So, again, we have that minimum lot size of 90,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of 150 feet. Both of the lots meet the standard. Same thing that I said about the other one, as far as the condominium design standards. We have the sidewalk fund here as well. You've got your street tree standard, and then, this one has less woods on it though, so there's probably going to be some planting in this case. And then, as far as the information is concerned, again, A through D were covered in the preliminary approval, and those are still on the plan. Master deed has now been reviewed by the attorney, basically the same three points in that letter that were provided for the other one, and then FG and H, again, don't really apply because we don't have the utilities and roads going in that you often would have in a condominium subdivision. So, again, if you have any questions.
All right, commissioners, any questions on the Christina's Crossing review?
Just for my own curiosity, is there a benefit, Joe, to doing it this way as opposed to just splitting the lots? It seems like more complicated with the...
I think that's a great question for you. Let's let him, let's let him answer that.
You're correct. It's a lot more complicated.
Oh, split, okay.
Want me to make another motion?
Someone needs to.
Just go change the numbers.
Well, I'm going to try here. Correct me right away if I'm wrong here. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the final site condominium plan. that we approve the final site condominium plan for Christina's Crossing, which is on parcel number 14-01-29-100-29.
Zero.
Okay, did I get that right?
Zero, plus zero, twenty nine.
Yeah, Joe, why does your memo say 031 slash 029?
Yeah, this is 031.
It's probably supposed to be a lot 39, or 29. 031 was the last.
Yeah, 20, yeah, 29 is the last. I think I started doing it as one review.
Okay, so I think I said it right. So it's a motion that we approve that with the stipulations being that the developer will pay into the township fund instead of putting in pedestrian walkways. And that he, his final plan will also comply with township regulations for street trees. And that future driveways and buildings will comply with applicable township ordinances. And that the buildings to be, will be located within the required building envelope. In addition, the following with regard to the master deed are also included. That being that the master deed in Form B condominium subdivision plan will be reviewed by the township planner with respect to planning concerns and any specific planning items that may need to be addressed and included within the documents. Second, that the legal description and Form B condominium subdivision plan will be reviewed by the township attorney for accuracy. And lastly, that Section 8 easements, paragraph 8.3 governmental units will be revised to provide that the township has a right to access the property if necessary for utility purposes.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Got a motion by Anne Marie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Christopher Hegelstein. Any other discussions? Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Jay Vincent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Cant?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
All right. Moving on, item nine on the agenda is communications. There are none, so we're gonna move on to item 10, unfinished business. 10A is our master plan discussion.
Yes, you might want to call a short recess because I'm gonna set, hook up to the projector and.
Sounds good.
Do you have, can I ask before you do that? I went online and looked at the draft survey. Do you have a hard copy of that with you?
Um, I don't have a hard copy of it.
Past notes.
Oh, gotcha.
I couldn't do it.
Okay, well, I'll have it up there and you can maybe compare it while we're going through it. But I don't have a hard copy, but.
All right, we're gonna take a short break, five-minute recess. We'll be back in 7:27.
Oh, sure. You know what? I've got a long cable now.
Are we paused?
PM? Joe?
Okay.
You're up.
All right, so I, I got the beginnings of a project website together. If anybody has a photo they'd like to put forward as a candidate for this banner here?
Yeah.
I welcome it. I was going through my photos of Bruce Township and it's like the spot on a lot where someone wants to put a shed or like the back of some building that I was reviewing.
We have a good photo on our existing Bruce Township website.
Yeah, but again, if anybody has any photos that they think like look nice and, I mean, they could be just about anything in the township. But I went with this one for the moment. And I've got a very brief intro here. I want to make this a little friendlier and more oriented toward driving people to the survey. The survey's got a little button over here that I'm gonna work on the appearance of that, too. I did put up some slides here as PDFs and to give people a sense of, well, what is mass, what is the master plan? What does it even do? Why are we doing this? I've got some background info on the township. We talk, give our population summaries and things like that that we've gone through at these meetings. And then I also provided some raw information about commercial and industrial land at Bruce. Again, we've also gone through this at meetings before.
Yeah. Are we gonna comment on those slides now or do you just want us to wait for later to do that?
No, let's wait for now. I've got two much more straightforward maps that just show here's what's zoned commercial and here's what's zoned industrial being made right now as well. So those will go here and they're also gonna take the place of the placeholder map that I have in the survey.
But I wondered.
I have a map in the survey right now that's really hard to read because of the size and the fact that both commercial and industrial land are on it. So the second I looked at that, I was like, okay, we definitely need to set two separate maps.
Right, and they'll be on the front page.
Yeah, they'll be on the front page and they'll also be in the survey. So someone who's looking at the question can just reference the map while in the survey.
Hey, Joe, real quick, could you go back to the master planting? Derek had asked about comments and so can you just quickly recap? Because there may be people watching as well that maybe don't understand the process
Oh, sure.
of just like the order in which we're going through these stages, so.
Sure.
Just so that everybody has an understanding of when, like where we're at in the process and then when the, when there'll be opportunities for additional comments.
Sure, so the master plan process has some formal stages that are laid out in the Planning Enabling Act. And the first one is to send a notice of intent to plan to neighboring communities and relevant agencies, which we did back in September. Then there is the plan creation period, which is when we have these discussions. We do this survey. Oh, we're gonna have an open house at one point. And then we've also got the actual drafting of the plan that occurs in there as well and any maps that go along with it. Once we get through that portion, the planning commission will review the draft plan and request that the township board release the plan for comment. At which point the plan is made available for comment for 63 days. That's, the official requirement is that you make it available for comment to the same entities that you sent the notice of intent to plan to. But it's good practice to also make it available for public to comment on as well and invite public comment and let people know that, hey, the draft plan is available. Please read it and let us know what you think. After the comment period closes, at the end of that 63 days, there is a public hearing at the planning commission. The planning commission votes to adopt the plan. And then it is optional for the township board to also adopt the plan. But generally speaking, most communities these days also have their legislative body adopt the plan. It gets everybody on the same page and gets some buy-in going for both boards. And then once you've adopted your plan, then you get into implementation, so.
Just to clarify, when we're talking about adoption, just so people understand, we could simply adopt something that said we're not making any changes at all.
That's absolutely true, yes, yeah.
So I don't want anybody to see adoption and think there's, you know, a preconceived notion that anything will change.
Right, absolutely, yeah. You, you haven't drafted the plan yet. You're going to adopt what gets drafted. So that's, that's the process. We are, you know, we're a good number of months out from.
We're still in the plan creation phase.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I would say we'll be in that phase for at least several more months.
Okay, thank you.
And if we have more like six or seven item agendas, it might add a month. We got through, we, yeah, we got through them all real quick tonight, so having this discussion, but.
Well, I'll be here next month, so you can jinx away.
But yeah, so the survey that we talked about last time has been formatted and put online. Again, there's still a map in there that needs to be replaced. But this is just in the preview stage, so I could fill this all out and submit it and it wouldn't affect the final results. But we have just a couple, yeah.
Right there.
Oh, this one?
Oh, that wasn't mine.
Oh, yeah, well, let's get, okay, that's better.
Joe, one question for you. Is the intent here for this to be all free-form texts? Or is there gonna be any like multiple choices?
Most of it's, most of it's multiple choice, but there's a few free.
Free-form text box?
Yeah, a few open-ended. So the survey starts with just a brief intro and then we get into the questions. It opens with a couple of kind of icebreaker type questions. Tell us three things you like most about Bruce Township. And then in a few words, describe what you'd like the township to be in 20 years. Then we get into the more defined answer questions. So what are the biggest challenges facing Bruce Township today? I gotta thank Commissioner Barnett for most of this. She sent some questions to me and I use some of that in here. So we've got some options to select there. Then we get into some kind of strongly agree, disagree type questions. And those include the ones that we looked at last time plus some that we talked about in that meeting. So we're asking people to tell us how much they agree with. I don't mind driving to another community for most of my errands. I live in Bruce Township because it's mostly rural. I wish that more basic goods and services were available within Bruce Township. Sort of an opposite to one of the questions we've already asked. Having a longer commute is an acceptable trade-off for living where I do. It's important for Bruce Township to be financially stable. Traffic in the area around Romeo is excessive, is one that I added based on our discussion last time. M53 is easy to access and M53 is safe, are two that I added since the last discussion.
When you're saying M53 there, are you meaning the expressway or Van Dyke?
It's the expressway and, well, I guess it's also the portion of Van Dyke that is no longer an expressway but has M53 as its designation.
When you're refining this, do we need to clarify that the question is for both?
If you think we do, then we probably do. If you think we do, then we probably do.
I don't know what everybody else is. What is the purpose of asking if it's easy to access?
Well, I think I mean, mostly we're just trying to get a sense of what people's relationship is to the road. I think maybe I was thinking in terms of ease of access, like how long do you have to wait to pull onto it as opposed to like, can I get there wire on a road?
Well, can we clarify that? Because I didn't take it that way, but that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, that's what I, when I saw that, what my reaction was to it was technically, we only have one way to get onto the expressway in Bruce Township. And that's just south of 34 where Old Van Dyke, that's it.
And Evelyn.
Right, and exactly, but that's the one that I personally find difficult to get onto because if I wanted to go, if I wanna go get out and go north onto Old Van Dyke, I can do it. But if I wanna go south, I gotta go all the way around, you know, go down, get clogged up, waiting for the light and then cross over and then go back. To me, logic would be is that there should be a ramp on at 33 Mile Road.
You're talking about a southbound.
A southbound, right, because for anybody who lives in this part of the township, like down here in this area or all the developments up McKay Road or what do you call it, McVicker Road?
Yeah, yeah.
And there, if they wanna go south on the expressway, they're invariably gonna come into town. Right, because there's. Yeah. Have you seen what that's like most nights? It's backed up to the Ford plant in town.
Well, just turn a lot, period.
Okay. So maybe some cleanup or clarification of the question there.
Yeah, yeah, you could do that. And then the next one goes to the haggard tourism issue. Farms near M53 should be able to diversify into commercial operations such as banquet facilities and restaurants. And then same question, but for farms elsewhere township. And then finally, it is important for Bruce Township to maintain its rural character as it makes decisions about new land uses. My thought with the, particularly the access to M53, which it needs to be reworded, but with that one is depending on the answers that we get to that, if people really strongly disagree with, hey, it's easy to get onto M53, then that tells us a little bit of something about if we're gonna allow things to happen along M53, then we've gotta think about how that happens. You can't just put a bunch of driveways onto M53. You probably have to channelize all that traffic somewhere. So that would speak to the way we write our ordinances in the future as far as marginal access drives or something like that. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to include some sort of question about that. And then we have two questions that are sort of opposed to each other. Commissioner Barnett had an interesting idea about possibly putting these on a scale similar to the question above. Right now, they're split into two questions. So it's if additional goods and services were to be located within Bruce Township, which of the following do you think would be most desirable to have nearby? Select all that apply. And then the other one is if additional goods and services were to be located within Bruce Township, which of the following would you least like to see? And it's the same list. So we kinda give people the chance to say, all right, a lot of people support this and a lot of people are against this. And then you hope that the lack of support correlates with what people are against and vice versa. But you might find that the lack, the lack of support is in conflict with something that people are saying that they don't want. So that becomes its own thing to discuss, right? Then, let's see, industrial land provides the highest revenue to the township of any land use, but these uses are often associated with heavier vehicles. How willing do you think Bruce Township should be to permit additional land to be zoned for light industrial uses such as small manufacturing facilities, research and technology companies and similar enterprises? Like your thoughts on the options here? Township should always be open to considering additional industrial zoning. Township should only consider adding additional industrial zoning in very limited circumstances and the township should not consider adding any additional industrial zoning at this time. Do you feel like that's enough of a scale? Do you feel like those? Do you feel like you as policymakers get actionable information from those options?
Well, I have a question. When you say additional industrial zoning, I mean, you're, are you basically speaking to if we were to get, like it was today, if we were to get rezoning requests to change something from something to industrial, is that what you're talking about there?
Well, it's any type of, it could be the township putting it on its future land use map and saying this is going to be industrial in the future.
Okay.
Or it could be someone asking for change, yeah.
Without knowing the benefits, I would just, you know, like knowing the benefits.
Yeah, there was only one other question that led up for this was the financial stability of the township. That's being reiterated to someone there, but that, that can't be expressed enough. Like Dean is that someone says, do you want, you know, industry in your backyard, it's gonna be a staunch no.
Sure.
But if you were to say, to ease the burdens of taxes and keep the financial well-being of the township, would you be open to this? I think that allows people to say, well, we're willing to talk. If we're, if it's a financial stability thing, then yeah, we're willing to do something, but yeah, otherwise it's gonna be a staunch no.
We are still waiting to get the information from the treasurer's office.
Yes.
That will help, you know, frame up that so people have a better understanding of things like if there's, I will never forget when the fire chief telling me if there was one industrial building built on a 33 Mile Road, the revenue that that would drive in just for the fire and ALS one, it's, it's pretty significant and they're very low. They, they virtually don't use the fire department.
Yeah, it's definitely a financial benefit, but if people don't, if they can't see the breakdown and give and take, it's very hard. It's so easy just to say, no, I don't want it. But if you see the, the long-term benefit and what it rewards.
Is there an opportunity to expand that out that clarifies that commercial and industrial uses typically put a lower demand on services?
What I'm envisioning is, and it's, I'm kinda stabbing right now because I don't know what the treasurer's office will present.
Sure.
But perhaps, you know, it'll be succinct and it can be like if it would be approved by the treasurer's office, it could be something like what's gonna be on that very front page.
Right, yeah, that's what I would wanna see is it on that front page with that, see a comparison of, you know.
Right, you could even put a link there too to open up the same PDF so that way people have access to it on both pages.
And that kinda becomes the, why would we, why are we even considering, why are we even thinking about industrial, well, here's why. Doesn't mean we're necessarily going to zone more land for it, but this is why you think about it, you know.
Right, and I know when to go to the, what we're talking about when I was making notes on this piece, I'll give you all this, is that where we talk about what's currently zoned commercial and industrial, whether it's got something on it or vacant as well as the, you know, future land that's planned for that. What I had noted to myself, I think it's absolutely relevant to characterize the amount of industrial land that had, that was part of the plans back for, you know, a really, really long time and then has gone away over time. Right, I'm not implying that we need all that back, but most people who live here won't necessarily understand that we lost 100 acres at, you know, at 33 and McKay.
Sure.
Or, you know, the hundreds of acres we've lost when, with the Romeo annexation.
Right.
So Joe, here's how I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking out loud here. It almost like posing it like a question, like if the township had to choose between raising taxes and increasing industrial land usage, usage areas, which would you prefer to like? Would you rather pay more taxes and again, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying like, how can we phrase this in a way that would give people an option, like ability to understand like? Option one is that, hey, you pay more taxes, but we don't allow any more industrial. The flip of that is you don't pay any taxes, additional taxes, but we increase industrial. And maybe there's a interim option, which is we do a little of both or something, some way to like communicate like what the effect of that decision would be.
I like that from the standpoint that you're not mentioning dollars, but everybody knows taxes is dollars.
Yeah.
I think that that's a great way to
Get the point across?
It gets the point across to everybody. I mean, everybody talks taxes, it's dollars, we really know what it is. But given the option, would you willing to trade some tax dollars for some inconvenience? Where would you fall? I think that's actually a great way to.
Choice and a logical whole.
Or services, not even tech.
Yeah.
Everybody wants the best fire department, everybody wants the best ALS, everybody wants the best everything, but we don't want taxes to go up. So you could also say, would you be willing to trade industry, industry and whatever for?
Lower services or?
Improved services.
Yeah.
Improved services or less taxes or whatever. You just give them options, you wouldn't have to really say value, but that, everybody knows taxes costs, services costs and it would be probably a
Very interesting.
The relation general.
Remembering, well, you were at the town hall when you guys teed up, you know, the potential for a police milit.
Yeah, two mils.
Right, and that was something that hasn't been up for a vote in Bruce Township, I think for what?
Been a long time.
12, 15 years, something?
2008 maybe.
Right, and so this was just a first blush at this town hall where they were, you know, David and other trustees were just information sharing basically. And it was very interesting to listen to people's comments who were coming up. You know, a lot, a lot of them were maybe confused about the fact that this, this is not something the township can do without a vote, right? And so there was a lot of clarity and they made a lot of good remarks about extra information that they would need to be able to make their, their vote if it came to that. But the point was, is that I noticed there were a good number of people who didn't seem to think there was any need for police protection over and above which we have today. And conversely, there were others who felt strongly that, you know, an improvement would be better, but it's eventually gonna come down to how much it's gonna cost everybody.
Yeah, I wonder if you could figure a word that would somebody be willing to trade industry for services, et cetera, like fire, EMS, police, lower taxes? And just give a range of things that, a possible trade-off, et cetera, just to get people thinking that, oh, it does come with a trade-off. Again, because again, you've already reiterated it's for a financial aspect, but to actually put it in some possibilities, everybody knows what police protection is. We know what fire, we know EMS, so we wanted to say additional. We have people talking about garbage pickup, talking about when on the tax board interview, kids coming here, we paid too much, we don't have this, we don't have a public pool, we don't have this. So people know what they don't have. They may, they may connect well with that.
Okay.
You're saying even though it's not, it doesn't directly involve the master plan that we're doing, you're trying to give context to people with additional questions like that?
Because yeah, people, they shut down to, do you want industry? Maybe without saying, there's more to the sense. Industry brings us, you know, do you, do you want more police? Absolutely want this. Well, you give them an option, say, look, if I go into industry, you may be able to get that police service you want. You may be able to get that lower tax bill you want. I know you want these things. So just give an idea. This is how some municipalities get to these things. Not saying we have to adopt it. I'm just saying, if I were to offer you this, would this be something we would consider? And people may say, well, yeah, I can get that. So I just, it's just, otherwise it's a blanket no. You're gonna get a hundred percent no.
I think what you're referring to a bit is the consequence of what the choice is.
No, I think that's an interesting way to rephrase 78 here. There's more of a deal with the commercial and there will be a deal with the industrial. I wanna be as neutral as possible and
Sure, 100% yeah.
How it's worded, you know, because that's the, always the danger of these surveys is that you're trying to like, you need some, you're like, you say, you gotta want this or that.
It's gonna come back as you promised me this, right?
So I'm gonna keep it very gentle.
So yeah, just trying to keep it as neutral as possible, but yes, sort of running out, but there's, but I think you could do that. I'll have to think about how to word it and what the options would be.
I think we can do it.
Anything you can get there. This is where the maps would go. I threw this map in there, it's not good, it's and I've got a um, I've got IG, I guess. Yeah, there's a little more zoomed in on that portion of the township that I actually do this and then then one is specific to commercial office zonings and you can just see that down on the map. And the other ways to industrial zoning, you can see that.
Joe. If, if you're gonna add the maps to kind of the front page of the linked website and right now you've got a couple of, you know, dropdowns. Is there a way to either integrate into the maps or this one where you've got commercial and industrial? Is a good, you know, concise summary of what we, what our ordinance allows?
Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Exactly, because I think a lot of people who are industrial and they're thinking of, you know.
Steel mill.
A steel mill, thank you, or something. We don't, we don't have a place for that.
Sure.
And also, you know, we have C1 and C2, which are our current, you know, commercial, but that's not gonna mean anything to anybody.
Right.
Right, and so I'm, I'm happy to help with that, but again, all going to so people can have really good explanations of what our ordinances allow before they just read industrial and think, oh, a steel mill.
Well, so there's a couple of things that can be done here. One is that the, the website platform, so I've got this one basic page here, but you can have tabs on it. So we can put information on multiple tabs and then bring people back to the homepage. What you want on each of those tabs is something very high level, brief, that gives people the base information that they need and then a resource that allows them to dig deeper. So I think if we explain- So I think if we explain industrial uses and commercial uses with relation to our zoning or and then we can just give them pages of the ordinance from those districts. Here's the list of uses.
Yeah, they won't, I don't think they'll reveal.
You can look at it, but if somebody really wants to, they can.
Well, I mean, they can do that right now just by going to our existing website.
But they can't do it when they're like getting ready to take the survey right now. They have to know to go to the website and down. So if we put it all here, at least there's a clearing house, right? So I think we could kind of do that is break it down into tabs and then have that information available. Um, the maps, they don't have to be something you link to. They can be right there as an image in the text and it says, and you talk to them about the map and what it means in the text. Um, so I think ultimately you have, you know, your four tabs or something really, um, clearly explained summaries and then, uh, give people additional information should they choose to, uh,
Couple of questions for you, Joe. Does this application allow for like dropdown lists? I'm just thinking like, not sure if it would be too much in a dropdown list, but as an example for industrial permitted uses. You know, right on that page, you'd be able to click on it and it taken, open a list with, on the page versus having to navigate off it. Just, you know, food for thought.
Exactly. Yeah. I'd have to see, um. Yeah, I'll just have to investigate and see what I can do.
Just suggesting that to make it more user friendly and to uh, prevent users from having to take and jump from page to page. The more we ask them to do, you know, you increase the probability that this is just too much. I'm done with this.
You don't think you could achieve that with the link?
Um.
Putting links instead of a drop?
Well, I thought we were talking about tabs. Links would be another.
Well, you can link to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would just link something on each question where it would fly back to the simplified version of the information.
Sure.
I was just, when you said tabs, the first thing I thought about was Excel, having to go to the bottom and manually taking in, okay, oh, this down here is, is for industrial use.
Pages of the website?
Yeah, it's just pages of the website, just like.
Look at all those tabs you have.
I've got a lot of tabs open. Um, that's opened my life. So.
Links would work fine.
It'd be, it'd be basically like this.
Yep, yep.
You know?
Perfect, perfect.
Um. And the other thing that I wanted to do here is under this take the master plan survey, the process for the master plan that we were going over from that slide before, a little more detailed than what's on the slide. I was going to put that right under there so people can understand. Here's where we are in the process. Here's what still has to happen. Here are the upcoming opportunities for you to engage. Uh, let's see. So, uh, we've got two questions here, one for commercial and one for industrial that basically refer to the map. That's one map right now. It'll be two. Um, so we have the industrial map here and then it would say, the map shows where land in the township is currently zoned for industrial uses. This will be eye opening for some people. A lot of people don't know that we have land zoned. Um, and then, uh, because why would, you know, they, that's, they live on the opposite side of the town. They don't need to know. If, if Bruce Township were to permit additional industrial uses, where do you think it would be most appropriate to do so? I've given three options here. I don't know if you like the options or would like to see the change. Um, this is my initial thought. It's directly along M53, although I guess the expressway versus non expressway portion, I guess is.
Maybe I need to say slash Van Dyke.
Yeah, I think it's important because just based on several public hearings we've had over the last several months. You know, there seems to be a, a concern about Old Van Dyke, which is M53, you know, further up north versus along the expressway itself where we have one chunk on the, kind of around the north side of the expressway as it turns that already is.
Yeah.
Industrial. And along the expressway, I think the only other, uh, actually I think the only, the other place we have is just further up here before you get to 33 Mile Road. And that's also currently zoned industrial.
Yeah, on the west side.
So we don't really have any place else along the expressway part of it itself that isn't industrial.
Yeah.
Which is obviously logically, that's where you put it, is by the expressway.
Exactly.
I like you differentiate between the Van Dyke, Bandit, Van Dyke Highway and the Van Dyke Freeway.
Uh, would, would it make sense to cut it at a mile road or something?
I was always wondering, could we do?
Like 34 Mile South.
And North, 34 South.
Yeah.
Because going back to the access to the, to the expressway, I think anybody that's 34 Mile Road in South has no problem accessing expressway. I think about some of the sun visors and things by 36 Mile Road. I think those are completely different road accessing. So when you mentioned that, my, my mind goes to where I live as opposed to where Randy lives could be completely different.
What's three zones then? North with 34, Old Van Dyke from 34 South and then the freeway.
I was just thinking two zones, 34 South, 34 North, just to simplify.
You do 34 Van Dyke.
Correct.
You do 34 South. You do 34 South though, I mean, it's inclusive of the freeway and Old Van Dyke.
That's true, yeah. True.
Uh, that's my recommendation is three. Then, yeah, you dumb it down. The people, what are they, you know, they don't go like, what are they talking about? What do they want here? Well, you know, I used to have to write for a living, but in my marching orders, I'm not always, I don't always do it right, but my marching orders were write for the 10th grade level. All right. You guys, you got a clear there, Jeff?
Yeah. Um.
Crystal flouting.
Some other place.
That's, please specify, uh.
So are they going to be able to write something in there?
Yeah, there should, oh, we didn't, there's a little box in there, but they got, there's got to be a box there. Um.
We'll probably, we need to say some other place in the township. They don't say Shelby Township.
Yeah, exactly. That's what you're going to get really someplace else.
It's got to be the last one you give them a box.
Some other.
Yeah, there's, we give them an option for, I don't want to see this.
Oh, I can't.
You know, so. Um.
Okay, let's see. And then, can you make that bigger, Joe?
Yeah, I kept hitting a hundred percent. I guess I was already at a hundred percent. Oh, sorry. This is what we're looking at. Express.
In the area around, oh. Yes, wait real quick. Instead of some other place where we put another area of township.
Some other.
Um, the next one is, is kind of the same question for commercial uses. So we show them where the commercial uses are now, where the, where the zoning is. And then if we were to permit additional commercial zoning, where do you think it would go? In the area around Romeo, um.
What does that mean?
But there's three sides to Romeo. So it's like, but how specific do we have to be there? And then what areas specifically do you think makes sense to, because a lot of it's neighborhoods already. So this, like clearly it can't go there. So.
I mean, somebody may think at 33 and McKay is around Romeo. Whereas my concept is like right down in this area is around Romeo.
I guess maybe it would be, it would be better to specify. Yes, it's really Van Dyke, the one place.
Well, we have.
Where else would it go?
There's Van Dyke and then we have. I'm totally making this up. We have two pockets of commercial at 33 and McKay. It's on the north side, the northwest corner. And the five acres that we've already approved, uh, you know, site plan for on the northeast side. But I don't know, maybe people wouldn't mind, you know, further down 30. I don't see it, but if we're.
Would it make sense to just put some little blobs on the map and say, one, two, three, four? And then let people say, area one, area two, not area three, not area four.
I like that. Yeah.
Sold.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Trade box, pick on them. You can even pick one, two or three in order.
Just put blobs on the map. Very good, Joe.
Okay.
Also, see the one, two, three, four, fourth bullet point down? It says, I would not like to see more land designated for industrial. I think you mean commercials.
This next one is also one that Commissioner Barnett sent along. Um, and I thought it was, I thought it was worth including because, all right, let's say we get to the end of this process and we're not going to add any more industrial land. We're fine with what we've got. Well, we still have a survey that says, well, here's what people are most worried about with industrial development. We can still act on that if we feel like we need to in our zoning, even if we don't add. So I think that there's some value in, in getting some responses to this. Just what are your biggest concern? Um, why wouldn't you want it next to your house? Let you tell us. Uh, and then I've got, um, all the rest of these questions are the, uh, who are you? Question, um. So, uh, resident in Romeo, resident outside Romeo, business owner, work here. You might three of those if they all apply. Um, what's your employment situation? I work at home. Boy, I work in another community. I work outside my home in Bruce Township. Um, how many people? What's your age? How long have you lived in Bruce Township? Uh, how many children are in your household? An open comment box for people to provide any more thoughts they have. Um, and then, um, the only other question that I had thought of adding was one for like, which one of these boxes in the township?
Yeah, we talked about that last time.
Six. Not all the sections or something like, here are six broad areas in the township, which.
I got a request, Joe. Scrolling up, you've got noise pollution. We had light pollution.
And I know I suggested this question, but now that I'm thinking about it, people are probably going to select all of them. So we might want to put it on a scale. So we have a better idea of how important it is to them.
We can have them ranked. That's one of the question types. So they could just say, my top concern is this. Lowest concern is this. Yeah, that's, that's a question type that's available. So.
Joe, expanding on that, many people don't know what light pollution is. Something like, uh, if you could put in parents' glare or unnecessary glare. Joe, and the next one, resident in Romeo, resident outside of Romeo. I think outside of Romeo means in the rest of Bruce.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know that everybody knows that part of Bruce's, or part of Romeo's in Bruce or however you want to.
What, would you put in the village of Romeo?
Um.
Where we have residents in Romeo.
Yeah, I mean, you either live in Romeo or you don't. Um, is.
Like Romeo proper or Romeo, the village of Romeo or something to kind of, it, it seemed a little confusing when I looked at it. Um.
Yeah, because you can be a resident of the village of Romeo and live. Um, I was just trying to give people the option to tell us, I live in Bruce Township, but I'm in Romeo too. Um, versus I'm in the township.
Let me have.
Yes, Romeo is one of the, one of the boxes, I guess. Yeah, Romeo is one of the boxes. Yeah. Um.
My only other note is, can we ask the age of everyone in the household, not just the survey taker?
So some way to combine these two, but I think I did that on a, uh, survey in for Clausen where I was, said, how many people of each range are in your household? And then they can say, oh, I've got two people who are under eight. Two people between 1935. And I think I could, I think you could do it that way. How many people? Um, of each, each range live in your household. It, yeah, you, you could take out the children question. Um, you do that. Three. Throwing these out right now. I'll make them match the census categories. Um. Say. Um. Think, think that. Um. Okay, so a few questions to rework. Um. And then I'll finish building out the rest of the site and add those tabs and the other information. Um, and whenever we get the treasure information, it can be added to the site as well. Um, and then I'll circulate it for EC comments. Get a link to it. Everybody take a look. And if you've got any other thoughts, just let us know what they are. Um, and, uh, if we have other changes to make at that point, we'll make them. And if not, then we'll discuss when we're gonna start promoting it.
Joe, I have two more questions. I've got, I was able to copy these when you bought the, the little, you know, things on the front page. And I've got a lot of comments, comments on them. Uh, is that something you, if others do as well? Should we send them to you?
I think that's probably. I think that's probably the thing to do, just send them to me and then I. Better adding information or explaining something.
Okay, then my, my next question is, is it seems like it's, we're, we get a lot of input. And then I feel like we're getting behind a little bit in terms of what our original thought was. Do we need? Do, is there more we can do to help? Or, you know, is this pretty typical? Do we need a special meeting?
No, I mean, I think it's pretty typical. I mean, you wind up with big agenda one month and you don't discuss much. We had a canceled meeting. It happens. And I think we're, we're doing okay as far as timeframe, you know? It feels like it's getting a little long. Want to handle it, but you know, for right now, fine.
So we're still on track compared to?
All we have is.
All right. So you just to clarify that you think between now and the next meeting, you will send out a link for us to review. Okay. All right, so when Joe sends out the link, please review it, provide a feedback you may have so that we can keep the process moving along. With that, this is going to take us to ten B, agribusiness and agrotourism. Any discussions this evening?
No.
No discussion. Ten C is five G. Any discussion?
No.
All right, that takes us to item eleven. New business, so LI zoning to add back self-storage.
Yeah, something got messed up. The use lists didn't wind up in the final order. They're matching, we'll discuss. So I just wanted to make sure to correct. So I provided an amending ordinance and the final memo where we agreed on the list of uses so that we could compare them. I think something got reversed in the amending ordinance or something last time we did it. And just the raw, the, some of the list is right, but some of it's missing in the in the districts. So basically what I did is I provided the full correct list for both districts of permitted uses and special land uses in that amending ordinance. And we're just going to make sure that we get lists right based on our discussion from last year. Because some stuff got left out and I don't want to let it ride. I just want to fix it.
So do we have to make any changes? Because something got left out?
Well, yeah, you just need to have a public hearing and then send the amending ordinance back to the township board so that they can readapt it with the full list of uses.
So am I correct that we, the thing we missed is self-storage?
There were a couple of things, but self-storage was one of them, yeah.
So when I looked, it wasn't that we missed it. It's that they were, the special land uses were put in the wrong categories.
Yeah.
So the IRO has a lot of the special land uses for the LI one district, including the self-storage. And the LI one has what should be in the IRO.
Right.
So I don't think anything's been missed. It's just not in the right spot in the one sixty-one clear zoning document.
But did we approve it correctly?
Well, I went back to the list and I wasn't confident enough that we approved it correctly to just say, ah, we could deal with it later. I just want to make sure we did it right. So let's just make sure.
So we need to set a public hearing?
That's correct, yeah.
It will be this top thing?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so that has LI one. And then do we need to also add the verbiage, as Mandy's mentioned, on the IR?
That's included in there.
It is?
Yeah.
I see LI one, LI one. Oh, here it is, starting on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure that all four lists, permitted, special, permitted, special in both districts, match what we agreed on in that one memo. Right now, it's not matching perfectly, so let's just blank it. Here are the correct lists and we'll get them in the ordinance.
This is interesting because we already had to reaffirm this once at the board level.
Right, because it wasn't a publication done.
Correct. I think that was in the summer.
Right.
There was a long list of many things that didn't get published correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I would make a motion to hold the public hearing to review ordinance one sixty-one. The amended changes that were omitted during our last amendment refresh.
When would the public hearing be?
I don't know.
The meeting that I said we're wide open. Can we have it March?
Yeah, we absolutely do it in March, we've got time.
We got March on.
And you can say March or the next available meeting in case weather wipes out March or something, yeah.
And in March or the next available meeting.
Are you submitting motion for that? Or we don't need a motion to do that?
Oh, we need a motion to hold the, I believe we need a motion to recommend a public hearing.
Okay, that's what you just, yes, I'll second it.
Motion by Vincent, second by Hegelstein, any other discussion? Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Kent?
Yes.
Vince, Dee Vincent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Jay Vincent?
Yes.
Blaylock?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Joe, on the, on the top of page four, there's a blank box on the right.
Blank box.
I don't know if that was supposed to be continued from the bottom of page three.
I didn't get a page four.
That's in the industrial uses memorandum.
Oh, back from last April.
I think that just carries over from the page before.
But it says remove covered under permitted uses, but the, the box that's there is not, I don't, I didn't see that under permitted uses.
I gotta force quit my PDF reader, it froze up on me here. In the memo. Yeah, it's just a box that continues from the page before. Because it's a merged cell that corresponds to all the other cells. So the text is on one page and the box continues onto the next page. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, item eleven B is, or is it review, revisiting the bylaws? Commissioners, you all received a copy of the bylaws. Are there any questions or concerns or proposed changes to the bylaws?
When I went through the citizen planner program, they had mentioned that bylaw should have an ex-party contact clause. And we don't have one. I don't know if that's something we should consider adding.
What do you say?
It's basically says that communication between a commissioner and applicant, a concerned resident or other interested party about a pending or potential matter outside of a public meeting. That you're not supposed to, or you're supposed to disclose it, or?
Yeah, at a minimum, what's an Open Meetings Act thing that you should be disclosing it. I think it's, it would be fine to add one of those things. I don't, I, I've probably got examples of bylaws from other communities that have them. I'm sure, I'm sure the attorney has examples of that.
So this would be an instance is where the participants of the meeting constitute a forum.
Well, I think you're saying any communication.
I'd say like if you go into a site visit and you have a conversation with the owner of the, of the home, that you might bias them into thinking that you're going to vote a certain way. Or is to take away any bias between the applicant and a commissioner?
Yeah. So, well, just generally good advice if you do site visits and things is say as little as possible when you're on the site. So, you know, don't get into discussion beyond, I'm a member of the planning commission and I'm here to look at the site. And please come to the meeting if you want to discuss anything, because I shouldn't be discussing it outside the meeting.
I'd have to revisit all the details if I finish it.
Essentially though, it's, it's saying you shouldn't be having conversations with applicants outside of a public meeting.
Well, how's it, you know, is an example of discussions that took place with Cosmo Lombardo?
Well, those were disclosed, right? The planning commission said in advance that those were going to happen. And then the discussion was referenced during the meeting. So I think that was properly handled. But I think that between you and me and attorney, we could probably come up with a clause for ex parte communication.
So you're not permitted to speak with an applicant? Or if you do, you have to disclose?
Yeah, it's not a good idea. And the, the longer you, you talk, the worse. And, and our DBA has kind of been, has had to deal with that also, that, that, yeah. Want to keep it to a minimum.
GIS has been my friend. I haven't been on a property in, I don't know how long.
It is, it is very.
Well, Macomb County, if you go to their property gateway, they've got really recent aerials now. It's nice. They just updated them last month. It's fantastic.
So I think that's a good suggestion. Mandy, thank you for that. So Joe, would we vote on this or is it?
Not until you have draft language in front of you, yeah.
So I think we should.
Kind of a motion. Should take in direct, attorney to draft language.
It sounds like we don't need a motion.
Sounds like Joe had maybe some examples.
Yeah, I think I can probably come up with the examples.
All right, so you'll come back next month with an updated bylaws that talks about the ex parte communication clause. Thank you, Joe. Item eleven C is our yearly goals. This will be a review of our goals from last year.
I have one recommendation and one kind of throwing it out there type thing. A number eight, which is, has to do with the master plan. And, you know, we're continuing to work on that, so I would assume that the goal is still applicable for this calendar year.
Sure.
I, maybe we want to also add a clause there that says that we're also looking at commercial properties. You know, we started out with industrial.
Sure, yeah, I think you could edit that.
Tremblay's suggestion. In fact, it was probably this meeting last year, you know, when we were going over that to add that. And I think it was about maybe a month later. Mike was still here. I brought up at the meeting, you know, maybe we, this is the time to also include commercial, given some of the things we had been, you know, seeing, and so maybe just add that. The other thing I wondered about, and this was at the, oh, I don't know if it was the December meeting or January meeting. No, it was the December meeting where Rick had tossed out an idea. And it was, it was kind of an idea. I'm not sure I agreed with all the, the detail that he had put into it. But maybe exploring the concept of a different classification of residential multifamily zoning. Because right now we have RM one, RM two, RM three. RM one being the, the least intense of the bunch. But when you, you, I'll give you an example. The Syracuse property, one fifty-six West Gates, there was, I think it was just about just a, just over, I think it's five point two acres. And one of the original proposals he came up with, I think it was in the fall of twenty nineteen. He was requesting rezoning RM one, but it was, I want to say somewhere around thirty-five or thirty-seven homes, units in there. Some of them were two-story townhouses, that was most of them. one of them, there's a couple of single-family homes in there. My point was, is that had he been just rezoned to RM one with no conditions, that concept would fit in our, our M one as it currently exists. Which to me is monstrously dense compared to what we ended up with, with the conditions, which was only eighteen units or twenty units. Can't remember what it was. So what I, I've been thinking about is doing, would it make sense to, to create, actually create that as an opportunity? And it also hopefully would be something that would recognize the fact that, I mean, seniors are our biggest growing population in, you know, in Bruce Township over the last ten years. So I think where are those people going to go? Clearly, they could go into one of the existing condos that we have. But they're, they're, they're pretty large. And I think the only one that comes close to being consistent with our two, our M one is Victor Grumetos. That's very dense. Everything else that has been permitted has been something much, much less intense. Either like Twinbrook. They were somehow got a special land use, but they remain R one B.
Are open space.
Open space, that's right.
And, and what I had suggested you in our prior discussions was an RM zero, be residential, multiple, low density. So it, you know, people that have lived on larger pieces of property west of Bandeit, and they've got sufficient wealth that they can, can move into a luxury condo when they need to move out of their large home, that it's something that is more of an in-between as compared to like Victor Meadows. Lower density, larger units.
I, I don't know that I'm, just we're getting into the details now. So I'm just, I'm just, is there an interest in kind of exploring that? I don't know the answer. I just know that we're going to have, and I think Joe said it at one meeting, we are going to have a continuing. we are going to have a continuing, you know, need to have housing for people who need to get out of their existing house and all the maintenance that it entails. But something between that and having to actually be to a place where you, you need to go into assisted living.
Yeah, I'm open to adding a goal for the year if we think that's something we want to spend time on. I think it would be open-ended in terms of like evaluate the desire for creation of this new zoning concept. Focus on these.
Broke the community and don't get feedback.
Yeah.
If there's any interest.
Well, I think by, as I think Jared is suggesting, by putting it as a goal, I think that we can hopefully go and help us state it as such that it's not, we're not in any way saying we need to do this. But an open-ended idea that maybe when the time is right, that's something we want to explore.
Yeah, if the goal is study, then you're not locking yourself into anything. You're just going to look at the issue, and there's no predetermined outcome. You're going to study.
So is it like just reviewing the zoning classifications or is that what we're talking about?
I think we know that the current zoning doesn't address this particular item. So I think it's more of studying or considering the creation of a new zone that would be specific for this purpose.
Yeah, I would say if, as long as the goal is study, then cover yourself. You're going to look at it, but you haven't committed to doing anything one way or another.
Any opposition to that? Everybody good with that? Okay. Would we just write that in as an item 10? Do we need to come back next month with the?
You can write it in as an item 10. This is an informal thing, so it's not, you're not bound by it.
So help me word this. So study the consideration for a new zoning district that is focused on providing low-density senior housing?
Residential, multiple, low-density.
Residential, multiple. Low-density.
You might have four units together, but it's, it's meant to be more like townhome kind of stuff rather than...
Study the consideration of a new zoning district that is focused on past single-family, low-density development.
So Joe, I'm trying to think, last year when we did this, you come back with another draft?
Um, well, I don't usually. It's usually Dana who does the draft.
Oh, you do this for me?
So we get to prove it as amended and you would give us an updated copy next month? Or do we want to just have it?
I'd like to read it, and the reason why is I think that eventually it's presented to the board just as an informational item.
I think they do get it as a communication, yeah.
Right, so David would, would do that, and I want to make sure we have it right.
Sounds good.
Because I don't want, you know, unless you're comfortable explaining it without seeing it again in writing.
No, I think it would be appropriate to give a copy for, cover in a packet.
Yeah, so I, I can present it back here again before he does it, or I can, I can do it, you know, just give it to him and have him present it.
I'm trying to think, last year, I think, didn't our, didn't we present to the board both our, in the bylaws and the goals at the same time?
Oh, same time? I can't say for sure that we did it at the same time.
It was about the same time.
But I know that they both went.
Right. Because if we're going to be adding a potential provision to the bylaws along with Mandy's suggestion, and we're making a couple of things on the goals, maybe we could just do them at the same time. We sign off on them, and then David can take them to, you know, communication to the board.
All right, we'll do that. If you can provide us the updated copy next month, then we'll finalize that and send them both to the board after the March meeting.
I do have one quick question on number five on the back. They did make the decelerative, the lane longer to get off at the 33 McKay exit, right? They do that feels like they did because I don't have to come to such a hard stop anymore.
Did they make it a lot longer?
It feels a lot more comfortable now where it was pretty questionable for a while there.
I think you're just used to it.
Really?
I don't think they changed.
I don't remember.
I thought when they resurfaced it, I thought maybe they made it a little longer.
Anybody else?
You're just big though. I get up there all the time.
The first, I do remember the first time I came up on it.
The first time I ever got off that exit, I thought I was going to die.
Me too, me too. I thought, wow, I'm going to...
You guys should be on the survey we're sending out. Tell us about your first time.
Yeah, right?
The signs don't get taken out by cars anymore. There's a light pole that gets hit in time and the sign is down in time.
We all adjusted, but maybe I'm wrong.
Are we supposed to do anything about five? Because this has been on there. I don't think we have ever adjusted.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's an item on which your power is limited, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's true.
So I imagine we have done that, recommend to the board. I don't know specifically when that would have been done. I think it's a fair question, Joe. We're not going to have much influence to make this change. Do we keep this on here, or do we remove? Joe, did you hear my question?
Seems like this is outside of our scope. It shouldn't be here.
I, I mean, it's up to you, really.
Yeah, this, it's in the section that talks about support, whatever that means, and recommendations to the board. Support and recommend to the board to have the State of Michigan and the Road Commission do all this stuff. Well, you're right, it's been there forever, and I, you know, remember hearing the supervisor many times talking about, you know, it's, it's like a never-ending battle.
Kind of like 5G.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, it's so, it's sort of the planning commission elbowing the guys who are going to elbow the other guys. Because the, the board doesn't have any power to do anything there either. They've got to ask M50, or MDOT, and hope that MDOT is interested and able to put it on their schedule and put it in their budget and, you know.
So that would, that would in particular would be MDOT, not the Road Commission.
Yeah, it's the state road. The Road Commission is probably kind of the next guys who get elbowed. So we elbow, and then the board elbows, and then the Road Commission elbows, and then somebody at MDOT feels it and goes, huh, what was that? And goes back to whatever they were doing. Now, eventually, I think that there will probably be a larger reconsideration of interchanges in that area. And hopefully at that point, some improvement will be made there. But I would guess that it's probably going to be a while because it was, it was built not that long ago, and they usually don't revisit that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's generic enough. I mean, I don't know that it hurts anything to leave it, but I also don't know that...
I don't think, I don't think it hurts anything either, Jared.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing is, let's say MDOT does a series of forums or something where they're soliciting feedback on things that need to change. Well, you've had this in your goals for a while. You could send somebody there and say, look, we've had this on our radar for a long time. We really do need something to happen. We have documentation that we've been talking about it. I don't think that there's any downside to have on there.
So if we're going to leave that one, I, I'd like to, to mention that we might want to take number four off. That's something that I internally do as, as necessary or per, with the zoning board. I know we just, we just redid an application because, you know, there was a question that was always misunderstood, so we reworked that. Tom Calcopin did some things to that application. But I think that's kind of as an, just an ongoing thing that, that we do just internally, just as things change. You know, applications may need updating and things. I don't know that that's necessarily a goal for the planning commission. Say you.
It's more like an operational procedure.
Right, right.
I'm okay with moving it. Nobody else has an objection.
I mean, I'm always open to, you know, if, if things need to be changed or updated, I'm all ears. That's part of, you know...
You have been very generous with your availability of time.
Yeah, I'm good with that. So we'll remove four on the back. We'll update eight to include commercial, and we'll add a 10, which talks to the study of this new zone. All right. That wraps up 10, oh, sorry, 11C. And then last up is 11D, the annual report. Commissioners, you also have a updated copy at your seat that Ann Marie identified some changes to.
Yeah, and I have those too, and I'm totally fine making all those.
Okay. I noticed that we mentioned when Ed retired from the board, but we didn't seem to do that when Mike Tremblay did. Do we need to, is there, do we call all of them out, or is it just because Ed was the vice chairman?
I think it was because he was the vice chair.
Okay. Because he left in the, June meeting was his last meeting. So if we don't, that, I'm totally fine. I don't think we need to if that's not standard practice. I just noticed the one about Ed, and I didn't see the one about Mike.
I think it's appropriate to add.
I do too. You make a good...
Because it says Commissioner Darryl Blalock was introduced in the next meeting.
Right, it does say that, yeah.
In June, yeah, we could add.
Right, because...
So under June 5th, it does talk about Mike Tremblay leaving.
Where does this?
Near the bottom, PC-appointed Ed Cupp, Randy Cant, Rick Haggelstein as members of the subcommittee following the vacancy of the resignation of Commissioner Tremblay.
All right.
That should be it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I missed that part. All right. Any other items of correction on the annual report? If not, I assume we make a motion to approve the annual report as amended?
That's correct.
Second? Motion by Vincent. Second by Haggelstein.
We vote by acclamation.
Uh, I think, yeah, this would just be acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Just want to thank Ann Marie for the excellent job she did proofing and marking this thing up.
Yes.
Nice job.
I found one mistake that I made.
There's so much to go through.
It's on the last page, yeah.
Every agenda item, it's a lot.
Yes, thank you for doing that, Ann Marie.
Yeah, it was a little, probably not easier, but because I take notes for kind of the secretary and to help Dana, maybe it wasn't that, that hard.
Yay, Joe, and yay, Ann Marie. Thank you both for all of that.
All right, item 12, comments from committees and consultants. Anything else you want to share with us today, Joe? Or Dana?
Not here.
All right, thank you. Comments from commissioners?
Got something to share. During a discussion with Cosmo Lombardo, and I also talked with the Razes tonight, surprisingly enough, the developers really aren't aware of the Dark Sky organization and how to do sensible municipality lighting. And when I bring it up to them, they're all very receptive. And, you know, the cost for doing correct lighting versus lighting with glare, I mean, it's basically pretty much cost neutral, so why not do it right? So, but, you know, we talked about revising our ordinance, letting ordinance try and bolster it up. But until that happens, I'm just, you know, encouraging the developers taking light art community sensibly. You know, we're going through an increase in development. We got Edgemont, we've got the Lombardo deal coming. You know, DeMille's got a project going on. And let's just try to encourage the developers to do it right. And they have been very receptive to, you know, to the comments. So anyway, for what's worth.
Well, as you said, there's little to no cost doing it. I recently attended a presentation by two representatives of a lighting company called Lumicon. And the thrust of the presentation was reducing light pollution. Because at that company, they are kind of trying to focus on, on that with their product line. And they were showing projects that they had done. They showed one in Seattle where they had done this lighting plan, and you looked at it from the air, and all around it were these bright, blaring, hot white lights. And then this project was this like nice, cool, yellow, no light going up. The site was lit as much as it needed to be, but not overly. All the sites around it were just so overlit. And the difference, just in the way it feels.
It gives you a good feeling.
It does. It really does.
It's a, it's a complete opposite end of the yardstick compared to, you know, I mean, again, go down Van Dyke. I mean, it's just the glare, I mean, it's just, I don't know how people make those kind of decisions in clear conscience. So, but, you know, the one recent win is, again, Big Red Orchard. You drive by there, and I mean, it's lit up beautifully. And, but you didn't know until it was asked for. So, anyway, I, please consider looking if you haven't already. It's the darksky.org website. It's very simple to follow, and it's an eye-opener. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
You bet.
Anything else from commissioners? Dana did put a contact sheet at your seat, so please double-check that your contact info is correct. And if there's any modifications, please reach out to Dana to get those amended.
Thank you.
And with that, I move to adjourn at 8:57 PM.
Second.
Second by Cant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He needs adjourned.